I'm glad you didn't give it to me.
Yeah.
Here, go check out that other one.
Yeah.
We'll just have to leave it over all of a sudden. Yeah, come on Sunday, I don't hear an op, I'm like, oh no. All right.
Okay, all set here?
Yep.
Okay. Are we all set?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:05. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. I'm gonna start, is there a motion to seal the executive session minutes from tonight? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we did not take any votes in executive session tonight. It's now time for open forum. This is an opportunity for people to come to the microphone, to speak. You need to introduce yourself, state your name and your address. You have three minutes, and at this time, it is a time for the school committee to listen, but we're not able to respond to any comments or questions. So open forum is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay. Moving on. It's now time for oral reports, and we will start with the school committee. Are there any school committee members that have a report to give? Alex?
So, the Health and Wellness Committee has a few updates. We're looking to have a smoothie bike event return in the spring. We discussed the importance of sourcing healthy and locally grown ingredients in student lunches whenever available. However, due to supply shortages, it has been a challenge getting ingredients in. Due to staffing shortages continuing to be an issue, I especially commend Chart Wells and the volunteers who have stepped up to continue to ensure that lunches are provided in a timely manner. Our staff is continuing to do a terrific job in keeping kids active during recess and during a time when it is particularly cold outside. and during a time when it is particularly cold outside. We had at least one staff member who attended an indoor recess hosted by Recess Rocks, which focused on these different strategies. International SEL Day will be on March 11th. At the elementary school, there will be quotes blown around the school. Everyone will be able to share in books and different activities, working to provide additional information in a blurb in our district newsletter regarding mental health and different resources suggested by the Health and Wellness Committee and the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition. Lastly, yoga will be returning for staff members during February break. There are 35 staff members interested. The staff really enjoyed this work in the past, and we are especially grateful that it will be offered again. It will run for approximately seven weeks. Also, the Diversity Committee, now a Diversity Team, met, and we are working hard on establishing goals for the team between now and the end of the year, also looking at the next academic year ahead. We are so happy to report that we have a number of students and parents who are volunteering their time to contribute during these meetings. We really value the input that is being brought in. We're also looking at additional professional development opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Are there any other school committee members that have reports to give?
I'll just mention that negotiations have been completed with our Support Staff Union, and after the February break, we'll be beginning negotiations for the new contract for our teachers' union.
And thank you to Diane and Josh for serving on our Negotiations Committee. Okay, so we are moving on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Cummings?
Great, thanks, Timmy. Well, the bulk of tonight's report is presenting the school system budget. Before we get into that, I know what has been in the news a lot is the governor's order about masks, and so I sent a letter out to the community that within our existing policy, that we can follow the governor's recommendation for lifting the mask mandate for Narragansett students as of March 4th. We're waiting guidance from the Department of Health and the Governor's Office in terms of what will be the guidelines going forward. Once we do have that guidance, we can reexamine our policy and make any necessary adjustments. So that's where we are right now. So, again, we do have kind of lots of moving parts with this. One of the nice things is that we do have a robust system of data. Currently, about 75% of our students, according to the Department of Health website, have been vaccinated. And we have a very low case count right now, so it fits well within our policy to follow the governor's recommendation to lift masks in the local schools. So with that, I will move on to our budget. And so this is the fiscal year 2023 school system budget. And, you know, we began working on this in October, so I want to start, first of all, by thanking Karen and her team for her excellent work in pulling this together, and also all of our principals and department leaders. So Melissa, Gail, Dan, you know, our principals, Mary Ann, Lisa. Steve does an excellent job pulling together all of the operation maintenance work. Julia with the technology. Emily, who is not here tonight, doing the human resources work and really working on our staffing. And Lauren, of course, pulling it all together so that we can all make sense of it. And so, you know, I'll just review really quickly our budget schedule as we go forward. You know, tonight, you know, obviously, we're presenting to the school committee. We have a capital reserve meeting. What that means is that that's really looking at our building projects and our facilities on February 28th. We do have three budget workshops scheduled, and that's a time for us to go into the nitty gritty of the budget and really look at line items and take questions from the community and really go into the different sections of the budget. The first one on March 2nd will be the school-based budgets in special education. And then the second one on March 9th will be technology, infrastructure, facilities, transportation. And then if we need a third one, we can do it on March 14th. At our next school committee meeting will then be the vote on the budget to approve it or not. I will then kind of present the budget to the town council and take any questions that they might have on March 28th. We will have a workshop, if necessary, with the town council to work through any questions or any further details on the 25th. Then it goes into the town process, and they have an overall town council hearing on May 2nd. They do the ordinance on May 16th and then vote for approval on June 6th. So it is a lengthy process with lots of moving parts, but tonight is really just our kickoff of the discussion at the school committee level. So I think it's a great place to start is kind of who are the students within our schools? So we have 1,189 students in our Narragansett schools. We have eight students who are placed out of district for special education. We have 15 students that leave us to go to career and tech programs at, for example, North Kingstown or Cherahoe. We have 12 students that attend four different charter schools in the area. Remember, all these are students for whom we are financially responsible, so we do pay for students to go to the career and tech schools, and we pay for students to go to the charter schools. We have 21 students homeschooled. That's down from last year, but still pretty high than what we've had traditionally. We have 31 students who come in to us from Jamestown for high school. And Jamestown students have the option of coming to either Narragansett or North Kingstown. We have 84 students coming to us for our career and tech programs at the high school from out of district. And we have 48 Narragansett residents that attend private schools, grades K through 12. So, and what are kind of the stats around our students? So, right now, it's, you know, 11% free and reduced lunch, and I want to go into that, what that means. So that's our indicator of poverty that are used in schools typically. Right now, I would tell you that I think that's an under-reporting. And one of the unintended consequences of, school lunches are free for everyone this year, and one of the unintended consequences of that is that families are not identifying that they are in need of free and reduced lunch because everyone is getting it. Because of that, the forms or the indicators that we typically get in order to provide them, we are not getting because there's no incentive to fill out the form because you're getting free and reduced lunch anyway. So we're working on that, and that's true in every district across the state. Fortunately, there's been some understanding of that at the state level and the legislature because part of the funding formula is dependent on your percentages of students in poverty, and this is the number that gives that indicator. So that's really kind of a long-term issue that we're dealing with.
Pete just questioned. I don't know if you have that in front of you. Are we normally like in the 17% to 19% range?
Great question. Sorry, I should have said that. Yeah, we're usually between 18 and 20. We have been. Right, so that's, this is a low number for us. I would tell you, in reality, we're probably right around the 19 or 20%, just from the level of services that we've been giving.
So that would be about like a 50% decrease than what we usually would see?
Yes. Right, and so we haven't magically cut poverty in half in Narragansett, right? And so we know that there's an under-reporting of that number.
Especially because it's only been a year.
Right, exactly. So there are less than 1% of English language learners. So we do have students who, you know, English is not their first language, but it's not a large population for us. We're at 16.5% students who have, are in IEP or in special education. We're around 4% of students have a 504 plan. So what a 504 plan means is that you have, you need some sort of accommodation in order to access the curriculum. So how are we staffed? So we have about 139 and a half teachers, so there's not actually like half a person, right? So that's half a position, it's a part-time person. You know, 33 and a half teaching assistants, 27 transportation, 18 in operations, and that's, you know, our custodians, that's our grounds crew, you know, that whole piece. 14 and a half in clerical and business operations, and that's both in the schools and in central office. 14 and a half administrators in central office, and that's again in the schools and in central office. 3.7 people doing technology, and, you know, it gives us a total of 250.7 employees in the school system. So just some program highlights, and, you know, despite all that we've been doing with the pandemic, there really are some highlights of things that have been happening. So, you know, the district and the school responses to the challenges of the pandemic, I think, have been exemplary. You know, people have been working, you know, incredibly hard to make sure that the kids are in school, that they are learning, that they are safe, that they are happy. And I think, you know, from the ground level, our teachers, our support staff, our administrators are just really working with kids individually and working with families to make sure that they're having as, a biggest sense of normalcy as can be. You know, we are getting more and more every year expanded participation in AP and college-level courses. So we started two new AP classes this current year, and we'll have two more next year. And so we're getting more and more students engaged in those AP classes. Our agriculture, computer science, plumbing, and education programs continue to grow. We keep getting more and more kids in there. We are considering applying actually for a media and technology career and tech, and we're working on that application right now. Melissa's hard work has helped to open a transition academy for ages 18 to 21 students, and that has been, you know, a great success to make sure that those students who we're still responsible for are not getting sent out to a community where they don't live, but they're kind of right here working in the community and getting to know that, so that's been great. And, you know, our preschool is fully enrolled, which is great. It's always fun to kind of provide that service and see that, you know, we're serving the kids in the community. There's a big demand for that. And, you know, of special delight are the playgrounds for the preschool and the middle school. You know, so again, those, the little ones are really enjoying that. And the middle school kids are loving their new playground. And as a reminder, there was great fundraising by that, by the PTO in the middle school. So that was really, really a great thing. So, you know, our pandemic response, and I mentioned that earlier, you know, we've had a lot of collaboration with our teachers and support staff. We've partnered through all of this. It has not been easy, but they've worked super hard covering for one another. You know, especially the SIRS, kind of mid-December to mid-January was really challenging, you know, keeping the schools open, and we were able to do that. You know, we have a comprehensive testing program for students and staff. We're going to continue that to be able to monitor levels of infection within the schools. Ongoing vaccination clinics, there's one tonight, as a matter of fact, that's been pretty well subscribed, so we're happy about that. You know, we've had to make adjustments to schedules, class sizes, routines, and we're looking forward to, you know, starting to come out of that. You spend a lot of time building all those protections. It takes some time to kind of gradually, you know, unpack them, if you will. And so we've tried to be really communicative with the community, let people know what's going on, and we're going to continue to, continue to do that. So what does the future hold, right? So we're going to have to continue to really think about COVID-19 response. You know, hopefully, it will start to fade. And as they're saying, it's going from pandemic to endemic, and so we're going to have to really start to think about how do we live with the virus long-term? You know, staffing and infrastructure, one of the things that we tried out this year were those Dean of Students positions, and they've really been successful. So we want to maintain those going forward. Student-staff mental health is a huge priority. So, can, you know, we have a lot of kids that are really in crisis, you know, and so continuing to prioritize programs for them and provide them the service they need. You know, we're going to continue with the tutoring, the academic recovery that has been, you know, incredibly successful, and lots of families taking advantage of that. You know, we're working hard on our credit recovery at the high school. We have several kids that have fallen behind, so making sure that they are being able to catch up. You know, our ELA and mathematics curriculum, Gail's been working hard on those with her curriculum team, and we're implementing those at the high school in grades seven and eight, and that's being pushed down now into grades, you know, five and six as we go forward. Social-emotional learning is important, and, you know, a big thing for this coming year is the auditorium design and rehab. And so we're going to begin construction on that, hopefully, this summer. And so we're really excited about that, and you'll see that in the, in the capital budget. So our enrollment projections for next year. You know, we do see some things going down. You know, we do think that our pre-K will still continue around, you know, between 85 and 90. That's a tough one to predict because, you know, people move into town or people haven't, have moved and, you know, they're, the demographers are not aware of what they're doing. But we've been pretty steady at that number for the last few years. We do think kindergarten is going to be a little bit lower, you know, so projecting at 58, that's really a range. K, again, is one that's a little bit tougher to predict. You know, the ones that we do now, we do have some lower cohorts in the early years. So grade one and grade two are pretty low, you know, at 55 and 60. And then grade three and four are just slightly bigger. So, you know, I do anticipate that we will have one less class at grade one and one less class at grade two for next year. And then grades three and four will continue as same. Then you can see a little bit of a shift from, you know, cohorts in the 60s up to cohorts in the 70, you know, 70s and low 80. That's at the middle school. But peer does drop below 300 students, we think, for next year. So that is, you know, continuing to go down year after year. So we're going to have to make some adjustments there in the future. The high school continues to have, be the biggest it's been in about the last 10 years, and, you know, they're having the advantage of having the larger cohorts in there that were kind of base cohorts of about 115. Plus, each grade is getting between around 20 or 25 out-of-district students in it. And so, you know, that's going to continue to be, you know, we predict closer to 500 going forward for next year. So we do have a drop overall of about, you know, 30 students. And one of the ways to think about it is we are graduating these Narragansett cohorts of over 100, and we're taking in kindergarten cohorts of between 50 and 60, right? And so it's not that people are leaving Narragansett to go someplace else. It's just that there's not that many kids. And so, it's a lot of reasons for that. And, you know, it is currently challenging, if you're a young family, to buy a house in Narragansett. It's expensive. And so I know the town council is really working hard to make it more affordable and more accessible for families to move to Narragansett. You know, it is, in my kind of conversations with families when they're thinking about it, the school system is a draw for families. You know, it's, it's small, it's well-regarded, we do well with kids, but it is still challenging to buy a house here. So just to give you an overview of kind of the outgoing and incoming, you know, over the last few years, you can see since the 17 and 18 school year, you know, so the 17, 18 school year, we had 39 students coming in from out of district. And next year, we project we'll probably have around 120. So that's, you know, some significant growth over time. And if you look, our kind of outgoing has kind of fluctuated between the, you know, kind of 20 to 30 to 40. We do predict we'll probably have around 40 next year, so we're budgeting for that. Again, we thought that we'd be there this year, and we had less kids leave than we thought would, which is, which is good news, right? We, but we will see what happens. You know, what does happen with us sometimes is that if a family is renting in Narragansett, they don't feel like they will be here long-term. Often, they'll become engaged in one of the charter schools because they can be in several different towns if they're a family that moves and not have to switch schools. And so we've encountered that a few times as well. So if we think about our budget considerations, you know, there are some big things that really affect our budget considerations. You know, one is the cost of contractual obligations. So every year, salaries go up, benefits go up, just the cost of doing business goes up every year. And, you know, we do know that there's some inflation that's going to be affecting that this year. The financing of long-term capital improvements, and again, we are blessed in Narragansett in that we have thoughtfully kept up with our building. And so we are able to focus on projects like the auditorium and rehabbing that. It's very much in need of it, but it's certainly, we don't have to divert funds to emergency building projects because we've maintained our buildings over time. Resources to support pandemic recovery. And again, this is really about academics. You know, we have students that fell behind when they were You know, we have students that fell behind when they were out of school or partially in school, and they need to continue to have that support. We're getting there. We're working hard. The indicators are, we're making really good progress this year. But we do believe that we'll need to continue to have some of those interventionists in place for next year. You know, again, some priorities of the school committee, early childhood education, career and tech education, AP programs, so really spending on those and making sure that we're enhancing them the best we can. We do have charter school and CTE tuition obligations. And then just having innovative programs, so growing those programs and making sure that as we come out of this pandemic, we're getting back on track with having after-school programs, having the sports, having the things that really engage kids and families in the school system. So overall, we do have some staffing changes for next year. So, you know, there are lots of demands on curriculum right now, kind of rolling out from the state. And so with all the laws that they passed about revised curriculum, Gail has agreed to do a little bit more time for us next year. She made clear it was on a temporary basis. Then we are doing some reductions at the elementary school because they did have kind of some of the biggest reductions in their cohorts. So that's the reduction of a grade one, a grade two, partial special education and partial Spanish. At the peer school, they're kind of revamping their systems, so we are not going to have that halftime math intervention that we had this year. They're finding some other ways to work with that. And then at the high school, they're going to reduce by special education, half of special education. We do see a need for some alternative program. We have a group of students right now that are needing some extra support. They are not qualified for special education, but certainly are not making the progress that we want for them to make in getting through high school. They need some different sorts of support, so that's the Alternative Learning Program or ALP. So we're going to try to fund that for next year. And we do need some extra science for next year for some electives and some of the special programs. So capital investments are really simple this year. This is typically a list that's pretty long, stuff at every school. This year, it is auditorium renovation. So that is the big project for next year. That was partially funded from this year and will be mostly funded from next year. And we're going to get that construction moving, we hope, this summer. As a part of that, there is an air handler replacement on the part of the roof that is in that area. So it would be silly not to do that at the same time while we have the place all torn apart and doing that work. And then reconstructing the student parking lot when they did the safe routes to school, there were some adjustments to that student parking lot that we need to make in response to that safe routes-to-school construction.
Peter, on the auditorium renovation, will we have that 35% reimbursement on that?
Yes, we will.
Yes, great.
So overall, you know, the proposed 2023 budget is $34,479,784. And this year's budget adjusted is $33,209,079, right? So that is an increase of $1,277,05 or 3.83% to begin with, okay? So what is that made up with? How is it funded? Or what does it consist of? Well, when you look through, you know, this is the chart. I'll just highlight a couple of things. You know, one of them is going to be salaries, and that's up 2.75% even with some of the cuts that we've made. Employee benefits, they are going up every year, so we project those will be up around 5%. We do also project that, you know, some of the purchase services will be going up a little bit this year. You know, property, supplies, and materials, those types of things. And again, some of these are price increases, some of these are kind of different needs as we go forward. So if you look, though, and overall, and I think this is the theme that I go to every year, education is a person-intensive outing. And the whole purpose of all of our infrastructure is to support that interaction among teacher, student, and content. And so 80% of our costs are people, are the teachers, are the administrators, are the people working with our kids. You know, the other 20% are all the infrastructure that goes into making sure that they have the conditions so that they can do the teaching and learning well. But 80% of it is getting the right people in place to do the teaching and learning. So we do project, as I said before, salaries will be at about 2.75%. You know, we do have contractual obligations. We did reduce a couple of teaching positions based on enrollment, but we do have some additional supports for students that we are continuing from last year. And we do project that benefits will be around 5%. You know, we have appropriately self, we are self-insured, which means that, you know, we have our own pool of money from which Blue Cross administers, from which we pull to do benefits, and that is overall a cost savings. But we do have to maintain that, so we anticipate that'll be around 5%. And we also have pension obligations for the town pension for our support staff. And we do appropriately fund those every year. We never shortchange that, but those are going up this year as well. So the, as I said before, the total budget with capital improvements is around 3.83%. We are, you know, fortunate in that is really through a mix of both town appropriation and state aid. So right now, we believe that the act of the town will be around 2%, right? So that would be around $582,000. And that is, again, an increase from the tax because I am happy to report that we have been reliably informed, and the governor and the legislature is working hard on this, to hold harmless the districts from some of that free and reduced lunch decrease that I mentioned earlier in the presentation. So our state aid should remain fairly steady. You know, we do have our capital fund that we use for some of our capital projects, right? And so that's an ongoing piece that we invest in. We do have a fund balance, we project from this year, that we can use for operating for next year. And per the town council ordinance that we follow every year, if there's a fund balance, we use, you know, 3% of it for operating, 2%, or we use 3% of our budget for capital improvements. We hold two of it in reserve, and the rest goes to operating. We do have a good amount of money coming in from tuition, so when I mentioned we have 100 and projected 121 out-of-district students, you know, we do get tuitions for those students to come. So we do anticipate being able to invest $1,300,000 in that to help support the budget for next year. And then we do get some money from Medicaid and other sources. So overall, you know, I'll just conclude with the idea that, you know, the schools reflect the community, and when you have strong schools, you have a strong community. You know, we are helping our community to recover from some of the challenges of the pandemic. You know, we know that excellent schools attract families to live in Narragansett. We know that high-quality educational opportunities attract employers and professionals to our community. People want to go to a place where there are great schools. You know, we know safe and secure facilities support our kids and send the right message that we value them. And we know that the most important thing we do is have a well-trained and expert staff that are working with our kids, and we spend, put a lot of focus on that going forward. So with that, I can stop and take any questions or comments that you might have.
Do you have any idea on the number of retirements and how that might affect the budget?
Great question. So right now, we have, I believe, four retirements, and so that is a budget savings overall. So we do budget, you know, to get a mid-range teacher that might be replacing someone that's retiring.
I have a question about the grant funding that the districts are receiving. So like the SIR 2 and the SIR 3 funds. So does that appear in here, and where would that be, like the funding that we receive and that we're spending, like on stipends for the high-quality tutoring and other expenses? So where would we find like the, and also like, what's the timeline? Like, right now, did we just, can you give a little soundbite for everyone about, you know, SIR 2, SIR 3, Pete, about the timeline? Like the, where we are and?
Certainly, and I'll have Karen, you know, kind of back me up because she knows the details better than I do. So right now, we are in the middle of kind of using our SIR 2 funds, and they have gone to support some of the tutoring that we've done and some of the emergency supplies that we have needed, you know, going forward. But we have, for example, a building sub in each building that we are using our SIR funds to do because we've had so many absences due to COVID. We have been using that to support the tutoring and some other pieces going forward. And we're also using them to support a couple of the interventionists that are in there. And so going forward, we're using them to fund interventionists again, building subs again, and the tutoring again going forward. So we're trying to make the use of those funds to go into as many student interactions as we can. We've also used it to help support the technology that we've needed, so we've been able to kind of buy updated technology for our younger grades early on because of the fear of more distance learning, but also it was a need that we really had in our budget going forward. Anything you want to add to that, Karen?
No, that sounds about right. And then if you want to see some of the detail, we do have it on tab three on the other funds budgets. Those are federal grants, our state grants, and some of our other budgets. But if you look at page two and three, you'll see SIR 2 and SIR 3, what we've spent in SIR 2 and SIR 3, and what we expect next year. We will have spent all of SIR 2 by the end of this year, mostly, I think. And if we have a little bit left over, we can always do an amendment. But this is what we're projecting. And then SIR 3 actually has another year to it, so we got about $1.4 million, almost $1.5. And you'll see that I budgeted about $1.1 of it. And so in fiscal '23, '24, we'll use the balance.
Great, thank you. That was exactly where I was trying to figure out where it lived, so thank you, Karen. Justin, question?
Peter, question about the auditorium renovation. We approved of this pre-COVID, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
And that was before all the inflation risk. Are we still on track with using this estimate from a few years ago?
That is a great question. So when we do, when we did estimate it, we did, we do put about a 10% cushion in there just for possible change orders or cost overruns. So I talked about this with Steve this week, actually. He still feels comfortable where we are. You know, I am a little bit worried about both inflation and supply chain issues, and he is as well. So we're working with the architect and with the project manager to make sure we are accounting for that in the bits.
All right, sounds good.
Go ahead, Dan.
Just one more question on the chart on how the budget will be funded.
Yep.
The state aid reduction seems much lower than what we were initially told. Is that, am I thinking of the right numbers, or do I have that confused with another category?
Nope. We were originally told that we would be cut about $800,000. And in the governor's budget, he restored the cuts to education aid for this year. And so the legislature is supporting that. So we are, while it hasn't passed yet, we are anticipating that that will be true. And that's part of the hold harmless from the free and reduced lunch and the loss in numbers due to COVID.
Certainly good news.
That is very good news.
Any other questions from any school committee members? So moving forward into our budget workshops, and then we will come back next month after the budget workshops, take a formal vote. But where we're looking right now is if the budget moves forward with, you know, relatively small changes, we're looking for just about a 2% increase, ask the town council, like about $580,000 right now.
Correct.
And we'll see, you know, kind of what happens with that as we go through our budget workshops.
Right.
Well, I want to say thank you to Dr. Cummings and to Karen and to all the principals and Steve and everyone who worked on this budget. This is a tremendous amount of work that I know begins around December. And that's a lot of behind-the-scenes work to get to this point. And I know the principals had to go through a pretty rigorous process to defend their budgets with you, and we'll have those conversations at the budget workshops. And I know some of the principals are here tonight at the budget workshops. I'm going to have the same question because I really want to understand, when you had to defend your budget, were there any things that you felt strongly about that, when you had to prioritize, just couldn't come forward? You know, so sometimes we hear from you, it's as small as, we really want an elementary theater program, and the stipend would be, you know, X amount of dollars. And sometimes it's a very large capital wish, you know, so, or a staffing wish. But we like to have those conversations and hear that. So that'll be, you know, my question when you guys come up in the budget workshops. So tonight is not a vote, it's just, this is our first look at the budget. Any other final questions from the school committee before we move forward with the agenda for tonight? And I would definitely encourage anyone from the public to come to our budget workshops. They're a little more informal. We meet upstairs. That's an opportunity where we have each kind of subset of the agenda. The school committee will ask questions, and then if there's anyone from the public that has questions in our budget workshops, a little more informal style, it's not televised, they're advertised, they're open to the public, they're upstairs, and those are happening in the coming weeks.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Cummings. So we're going to move on. That was, you didn't have anything else in your superintendent's report, correct?
Oh, no, you're sick of hearing from me now.
No, it was good. No, that was very succinct and very well done, and it's always helpful to have the very, you know, the level of detail that we're used to with specific line items, and so thank you. All right, so we're moving on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve consent agenda items, CA 1A, CA 1B, CA 2A, CA 2B, and CA 2C?
So moved.
Any discussion on any items? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. On to the budget report, Karen.
Expenditures for the seven months ended January 31, 2021, actually, I should say And that is 53.45% of our current-year budget of $33,209,079. Expenditures and accumbrances, total $29,811,810. And that is 89.77% of our budget.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Karen? Okay, thank you. So we're moving on to school committee business. Item number one, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the school calendar for 2022, 2023 school year?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? So if the school committee members can take out the calendar that's in your packet. And we did take a first look at this calendar last month, and I know we had, you know, some things that we definitely felt comfortable continuing. And I know I'm going to highlight a couple of things from this, Pete, first, and then turn it over to you. So I know that we have heard kind of loud and clear from the community about the after Labor Day start of school. There's been some years where we have had the children start school in August. They got a lot of feedback from families and from local businesses where the high school kids work, that that was not something that people in Narragansett wanted. So this calendar is looking for an after-Labor Day start with Tuesday, September 6. This projected draft calendar we're discussing tonight has an end-of-school day projected as June 16. We've got, you know, similar trends from what we've seen about the Thanksgiving recess, about the December recess, and the April vacation. And so I think one of the, one of the kind of the big discussions we have to have tonight is really about February vacation. We had some discussion about that last month. We know that some districts are doing the full five days like we will have in Narragansett. We know that some districts are doing the full five days like we will have in Narragansett next week. And, you know, some districts were shortening that to two days wrapped around a weekend, so a four-day recess. We have to keep in mind, next year, we have to be closed for Election Day. So Election Day is on Tuesday, November 8th. So that's a day that we need to be closed for. This draft has, you know, certain days that we've heard from families and from staff that they like to have kind of those additional time off. So you can see this calendar preserves the Wednesday before vacation, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. November 23rd is a no-school day. This calendar has December 23rd off. So in December, the last day of school will be December 22nd. We're closed for Election Day, all the other federal holidays that we have to be closed for. So Pete, can you talk a little bit about where the professional development days are placed? Talk about your recommendation for February vacation? And if you've had, if there's any other school committees in the area that have adopted theirs or if they're still in discussion, I don't know if you have any information about that. So kind of turn it over to you for any highlights you want to share with us.
Sure. So when last we spoke, we were still awaiting the statewide calendar that was released. And the guidance from RIDE on the statewide calendar is that it's a suggestion, not a requirement. And so they are certainly trying to suggest that districts align as much as possible. And we are trying to do that with, you know, a lot of our holidays. Our PD days are going to be before Labor Day. So that's when our teachers and new teachers come in and get ready for the school year. We also put one in March. That'll be a full day off, not a distance learning day, just to break up March a little bit because that can be a long month for students and families. So that is kind of a long weekend, you know, in mid-March. We are aligning with Jamestown and with North Kingstown. And so I've had lots of conversation with both of their superintendents. We share a lot of students. And so we try to align best we can between Jamestown, North Kingstown, and Narragansett because the Jamestown students can come either to Narragansett or to North Kingstown. Both Jamestown and North Kingstown are going to suggest to their school committees to shorten February vacation. I do not believe they have voted on it yet, but I do know that they are going to propose that to their school committees. You know, one of the things that I would point out to you is that, you know, ending on June 16th is still relatively late in Narragansett. That would put graduation at June 8th, which has to be after 170th day. So if we have some snow days, we do have to have June 19th off. That's now a federal holiday. So we would be kind of ending in the early 20s. If we did have the full February vacation, we would most likely, with some snow days, be ending in the last, last week of June, right before 4th of July. And so I would recommend to you the shortened February break. Lots of districts that are having the full February break are starting before Labor Day. So that really seems to be the switch off. You know, you could kind of start before Labor Day and have the full February break and still end on a reasonable time. Or you can start after Labor Day, have a shortened February break, and still end on a more reasonable time. So those are really the switch offs, right? And everything in the calendar is a switch off. You do one thing and you have to make up for it in another place.
So questions or comments from school committee? Alex?
Well, I really appreciate all the hard work that went into this. I know, I'm sure there's going to be quite a number of students excited to see there's at least one day off every month of the school year, especially with March broken up there. The only comment I would say is, or recommendation, if there was any way to move February vacation back one day so that there is the day off on that Friday and Monday instead of Monday and Tuesday. That way, it's a four-day and four-day. I just think it would flow better. And I don't know, I just think it would be balanced out better than starting it on a Wednesday as opposed to a Tuesday the following week.
It's a little more challenging. So those two days are actually aligned with the statewide calendar in terms of being days off.
Yeah.
And so to kind of have a day off that's not fully aligned with the statewide calendar is a little bit more challenging.
Yeah.
Right? And so even the 13th that we have off is a statewide PD day.
Okay.
And so we are trying our best to maintain the spirit of the statewide calendar while making some adjustments that fit our community the best.
Okay.
And I get what you're saying, Alex, too. And I, I do like, I like where they're kind of strategically placed now, especially if we're trying to align with some other districts. My worry would be if the two days were Friday and Monday, then that Thursday then becomes kind of, you know, a challenging day where, you know, students may not do a full day that day, like that becomes a difficult day. Any day that is the day before a vacation can be challenging. And so I worry that if, you know, if there's, you're going into that big four-day break on a Friday, Thursday becomes challenging. But now hopefully they can get like a nice full week there, knowing that they're going into a four-week, I mean, a four-day break, coming in all refreshed for Wednesday.
Yeah, I get it. I appreciate it. Makes sense.
But yes, if I had free rein, it would be great.
Thank you.
So this is our second month discussing the calendar. It's up for a vote tonight. Any other questions or comments, anything from any school committee members? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero. Thank you, Pete.
Guys, keep us informed if they don't vote for it, you know?
Yes, so if there's any changes, I will bring it back to the table.
All right.
So on to business item number two. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the Narragansett High School music field trip to New York City, April 29th through May 1st? And this is 2022.
So moved?
Discussion?
So I'd like to invite Dan to come up and speak about this. And poor Dan, we've been kind of bumping this on the agenda, I think, for like four months as we've kind of waited to see what the world looks like. And so I, so he's finally here to tell us about the trip.
Thank you so much, Pete. First of all, it's just a real pleasure to be back in front of you all after the last two years and all the challenges that we've brought. And our music staff at all three schools is very excited to get back forward with the presentation.
I just want to make sure, is this microphone on? Because I don't think it is. We can hear you fine, but the, our wide, we have a wide viewing audience on YouTube. So we want to make sure that they can hear you.
Check two, is that better?
Yes, that is, thank you.
I was just saying, it's a pleasure to be back here and the music staff at all three of our schools. Molly Hamel, Mike Simeone, Sarah Kane and I are very excited to get back to providing the full palette of extrinsic activities that we offer to our students. We can't wait. We are fresh off of a trip this past week up to Boston. I hope many of you have seen the videos. Our treble chorus was selected to perform at the ACDA National, or Regional Convention, Eastern Regional Convention, and they had an excellent day. The students were performed wonderful, wonderfully, and acted wonderfully. They were great representatives of Narragansett. And just another piece of what we are hoping to really get back to here. To take it forward to the New York trip, the basic format of the trip is the same as we had in 2016 when we took this tour. We'll be leaving towards the end of the school day on Friday, the 29th of April. And on that afternoon, we'll do a little bit of sightseeing in Lower Manhattan. We'll have a group dinner and we will do a group rehearsal. The Saturday of the trip, there's a music festival scheduled first thing in the morning. We have three groups that will be performing at that, our concert band, our concert choir, and our treble choir. The remainder of that day is out at Six Flags Great Adventure in New Jersey. It's a little fun time for the kids. And then on Sunday, we'll be heading back towards Broadway. And we have two features for that day. We'll be going to the 9/11 Museum in the morning. I think that's a very important, you know, with our students all being born after 2001 at this point, it's very important to expose them to the events of that day and the history and make the connections to our music and just to their everyday life, what that's meant for their life. And the final feature on the Sunday ties into that. We'll be going to see the musical Come From Away, which if you're familiar with it, is based on, on 9/11, several hundreds of flights were forced to defer to what was practically a defunct airbase in Newfoundland. It was an airbase that before flights could make the transatlantic corridor on one tank of gas, they had to refuel in Newfoundland as technology improved. The airport sort of went to pot. A 9/11, 200 flights were diverted there in the community, hosted all of those passengers. And the show Come From Away kind of takes a look at the personal relationships that were formed on that day and gives more of an uplifting take to the events of 9/11. And we, again, thought it would be a really nice way to round out that Sunday. We'll be returning immediately after the show and should be back here by, we'll say, between 8:00 and 9:00 PM on Sunday night, May 1st. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them at this point.
Do you have an idea of about how many students will go on the trip?
Yes, we're right around 52. And the trip was not a mandatory trip. It's optional, but our interest is high so far. We have a few people who have chosen to not participate, but we're right around that 50 threshold right now.
And how many chaperones?
We'll have five. Two teachers, so Sarah Kane and I will be going from the high school. Mike Simeone is coming. And we have two parents who are not confirmed but are mostly confirmed right now. I just don't want to put their names on the record.
Dan, the students or families who have chosen not to attend, is it cost-related? Is it the experience? Is it COVID-related?
I'm pretty sure it's COVID-related at this point. I mean, there's still a lot of uncertainty. We are offering some trip insurance as well. But some families are just not ready to take that jump yet, and we respect that. But that's where we are.
So this trip is for students that are in band and chorus?
Correct.
And so I'm looking like at the performance schedule. It's your concert band and then the concert choir that performs.
Yes, and the treble choir will be performing as well.
And will students in all four grades who are in band and choir go on this? Or what grades?
Yes, it's open to grade nine through 12.
What is the venue for the actual performances?
The venue is a, it's a high school outside of New Jersey, I believe, outside of Six Flags, New Jersey. I believe it's Jackson High School. It's a really nice, it's the same school we performed in in 2016. State-of-the-art, huge auditorium. It's a nice venue. And this festival brings in really high-quality adjudicators that will give our students invaluable feedback.
I'll just make a comment.
Sure.
In many of our meetings, we're celebrating all the accomplishments of students and staff in this community. And this is one that I feel should be highlighted in this moment. So I'm happy that you're here. I'm happy we're having a conversation on ways to continue to elevate the arts in Narragansett. You know, as a parent of a child who's been through this program since grade four and still involved in his own way, to see the level of, I don't know, interpersonal development and confidence and social development and inspiration by engaging in the arts, in this case, music, is completely uplifting. And that needs to be called out and recognized publicly. So as we move forward to vote on this, I strongly support this program and the programs that you continue to initiate. So thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
And I'll just follow up with that. From having experienced it myself, I just want to commend you and the rest of the Narragansett Music Education Department and staff how honored and grateful that we are to have such an incredible music education program here in Narragansett. And to have been able to have been there from like one of the first days, I think, that you started working in Narragansett and to see it grow to the high caliber that it has. It's just really commendable and just want to say thank you. And to the students and the staff that continue to work really hard in the music department and to continue to put Narragansett on the map every time you guys go out there. Just really fantastic job, awesome. And you should just all be very proud of yourselves. And congratulations on your recent accolades in Boston.
Thank you so much, Alex. And again, it's all made possible by, I think you were my first four-year class, right? That was way, way back.
Yeah.
It's built on the foundation that you all laid back in 2008.
Thank you.
And is this the only the second time that they've done this trip?
Yes, we did New York in 2016, Disney in 2019. And then the trip schedule was obviously a bit disrupted. And hopefully, we'll be back next year at this time to propose Disney for 2024. That will be our next scheduled trip.
And most of all, the outings that are planned within the trip are group outings, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, we'll keep together. And the times that are unstructured, as we did last time, students will be assigned to a chaperone group. And we'll always have a watchful eye on everybody while they're, while they're out.
I'm glad to hear that.
I know my, one of my daughters went on this trip and that was, hard to believe that was 2016. But I'm really happy for the seniors that, you know, had such a challenging year last year with COVID, you know, to have such a special celebration, to kind of get back to normal and have a very special trip that they will remember when they are older. So happy to support the trip as well and appreciate all your work to put it together. And I'm glad that it's before us tonight to vote on.
Great, thank you, Tammy.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, thank you. So we're on to school committee business item number three. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, for the displacement of the following teachers with seniority numbers 2218, 2284, 2285, 22121, 22122? And the non-renewal of the following teachers with seniority numbers 22124, 22148, 22144, 22150, 22151, based upon the following reasons. Due to the number of students projected to require services in certain areas, it is anticipated that it will be necessary to restructure positions or programs and/or is believed that there are better teachers available to fill the position. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. And the last business item for tonight, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent and the director of finance administration to purchase 244 modified factory replacement filters from bulbs.com at a total cost of $13,596?
So moved?
Discussion?
So these are the replacement filters for the air filters that we have in every classroom across the district. So they're HEPA filters that are run throughout the day. And, you know, they are, they need to be changed. And so they're, you know, they last for a long time, but they are running, reaching the end of, the first set of filters are reaching the end of their life. So we do need to replace them across the district. It's not, unfortunately, a staggered purchase because we put them all in at the same time a year ago when, you know, COVID started. And so it's hitting us all at once now.
And Pete, do you anticipate this is going to be an annual expense for us to incur?
Unfortunately, given the conditions of the world right now for the next few years, for sure. I hope we reach a place where we don't have to have an air filter in every classroom. But quite honestly, you know, we do feel like it reduces flus and cold and a lot more than just COVID. So we have seen some beneficial ripple effects of it.
Any questions or comments from the school committee?
Well, it sounded like you answered my initial question of the life expectancy of one of these filters. Do you happen to know off the top of your head, did we use bulbs.com last year? I'm blanking on the name.
We did, they have remarkably good prices.
Fantastic, thank you.
Do they sell flowers, too?
They have a little bit of everything.
Light bulbs?
I do have two small questions. Is this, is bulbs part of the purchasing agreement for the state?
That is a good question. I don't know the answer to that. Are they on the master purchase agreement?
Not that I know of. That's why we had to have. That's why we had to have two other quotes.
I thought so. That made sense because like a lot of this stuff hasn't been purchased yet because it's all COVID-related. And is that the, all of them, or is this just one part?
That is the bulk of them. You may see some more smaller purchases, you know, as we go forward, but this is the majority of, of the air filters in the district.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the school committee? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Are there any communications anyone wants to mention? So just a reminder, our upcoming budget workshops, the time is 5:30 PM and they will be upstairs. And so our first budget workshop is March 2nd at 5:30. Our second budget workshop is March 9th at 5:30. And then we'll be back here on March 16th for our regular business meeting at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn at 8:08?
So moved?
All in favor?